Board members, if you could just give your how long you've been on the board, as well as the communities that you represent geographically, just to make sure everyone understands the geographic representation. So my name's Tina Marques. This is my eighth year on the board now, and my final year. And I represent West Boulder and Central Boulder. Richard?
Good morning, everyone. Richard Garcia and I represent District G, which covers Erie and Lafayette. And we did some redistricting now, so I'm a little bit not too sure how far the district extends. But pretty much Erie and Lafayette, and I believe it's still a little bit of Lewisville. And I've been on the board now, what, five years going on, six years?
Okay. Kitty or Kathy?
Who do you want to go, Tina? Me?
You, yeah. I'm trying to go alphabetically, but it's hard.
Monday morning. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here. I'm Kathy Gebhardt. I'm the Vice President of the Board, and I've been on the BVSD Board since 2017. I'm also on the CASB Board and the National Association of School Boards Boards. So looking forward to talking with everybody. And I represent District C, which is kind of South Boulder up to where it bumps into Kitty, going up to Superior, and then picks up Nederland. At least that's how it was. We haven't voted on the new lines yet, but that's where I am right now.
Okay. And who has a little bit of Gilpin?
That would probably be me, but that's a good point.
All right. Kitty?
Kitty Sargent, I, excuse me, represent District F. Oh, I'm the Board Treasurer. And District F is Southern Superior and Broomfield. And I was elected in 2017. So Kathy, you've been here longer than 2017.
You're right, 2015.
Yeah, I was thinking, that's not right, but it's Monday morning, so it's okay. Yes, right. I'll be up for reelection next year.
Lisa?
Hi, Lisa Sweeney-Murren. I've been on the board about a year. And my district is always hard to describe, but it's sort of most of Chautauqua, and then the area is just east of there up to Foothill Highway.
Okay. Stacy?
Hi, I'm Stacy Ziss. I've been on the board a year as well, and I represent mostly North Boulder with a little slice of Erie.
Okay. And Donna Myers isn't able to join us, but she represents Central Eastern Boulder, sort of by the Reserve, and also a part of Lewisville. And just another comment that Erie is a, we shared about 50/50 with St. Braine. And Broomfield, we share in thirds with Adams and Jeffco. So those are two interesting towns that are dispersed across three school districts.
Actually, Broomfield has five school districts.
Perfect. See, I learned my last year, and I'm learning. Who knows? Okay, Rob, and then we'll go to our legislators.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you all today. Rob Anderson, I have the honor of being Superintendent of Boulder Valley School District. This is my third year of being Superintendent and just really blessed to work with an incredible school board and working in a great community. So it's good to see you all today.
Great. All right, Tammy?
Good morning. I'm Tammy Story. I represent Senate District 16. And within Boulder County, I have the southern end of Boulder County that includes Superior, Eldorado Springs, and Eldora, up into Gilpin County. And then have all of Gilpin County, the mountains of Jeffco, and also the southwest corner of Denver. And I'm a longtime advocate of public education and have invested lots and lots of time, decades, in K-12 public education, but particularly focused in Jeffco, which is where I live. And delighted to be here, and thank you so much for the opportunity to meet with you all. And look forward to today and our work going forward.
Great. Okay, who wants to go next? Judy?
Hi, Judy Amabelay, and I'm Representative-elect for House District 13. House District 13 is the Boulder County west of Broadway, all of Gilpin, Clear Creek, Grand, and Jackson Counties. So lots of overlap with other people here, but also a bunch of communities that aren't in, don't have any association with Boulder County or Boulder Valley Schools. Also, very happy to be here and thank you all for making that possible for me. I also just want to add, I have three kids who are all graduates of Boulder Valley School District, starting in preschool through high school.
Wow. Okay, who's next? Karen?
Yeah, after I unmute. I'm Karen McCormick. I'm Representative-elect for House District 11, which is all in Boulder County and includes Longmont, most of Longmont, Lyons, and Nywha, and goes up into Allen's Park as well. So following on the heels of Representative Jonathan Singer. Also very happy to be here. My kids all went through the St. Braine Valley School District, so you're neighbors to the north. And just wanted to say, Rob, I met you briefly when you first came to town, when you came to speak to our Boulder Rotary Club. So it's good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Okay, Tracy, I think. Is that right? How am I doing? Is Tracy there?
I think on my screen, it showed a minute ago that she left the meeting.
I think she might have gotten cut off, so hopefully we'll get her back on.
Okay, I'm here. Tracy Burnett, yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I had trouble with the, for some reason, I couldn't get the audio. Yes, I'm Tracy Burnett. I'm representing House District 12, which is Eastern Boulder County, includes a part of Longmont and all of Lafayette and Lewisville. So I have two school districts that I represent, and I'm delighted to be here. And I should say that education is very important to me. My kids have been through all sorts of schools, public schools, public charter schools, and also private schools. So I have a sort of a unique perspective. And, but I really support public education. I'm a product of a small rural public school from, you know, from New York State. And I'm just here to support schools. I really believe in them. So thank you.
Okay. And then there's one phone number that I don't recognize. Tanya and Ernestine, do you know what that is?
No, it doesn't have a name on it.
Okay. All right. So mystery phone person, do you want, oh yeah, there we go.
Hi. Yeah, I believe it's me. It's Barbara Kirkmire. I'm Senator-elect for Senate District 23. I'm currently a Weld County Commissioner, but my Senate District covers all of the city and county of Broomfield. It covers about, it goes right up the I-25 corridor, covering Weld County, and there's a sliver of Laramore County in it. So portions of St. Braine, but several other school districts are within my Senate District.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
Terrific. Okay, so I guess we'll start with our legislative platform. And well, actually, I think we'll just start with how, as a school board, we approach advocacy. So we are, we have a lot of different people who advocate through different channels. Rob and his staff advocate through CASE, the Colorado Association of Superintendents. We advocate through CASB, the Colorado Association of School Boards. But on specific bills, we primarily advocate through our lobbyists, Tanya and Ernestine. And so what we do as a board is we develop a platform every year to try to reflect our priorities for that year. And we have not voted on the final version, but we do have it. And I just want to see, do the legislators all have the draft platform? No? Okay, so we can send that to you. So if I send it to Tanya and Ernestine, can you guys send it over to them?
Yeah.
Okay. And Laura, do you happen to be on the phone?
I am still here.
Would you mind sending the draft to Tanya and Ernestine, who can forward it to the five legislators who are here with us?
I will do so.
Thank you so much. So what we did this year is a little different, because nothing is the same in 2020, 2021. And generally, our platform is about four pages, about some different areas. We condensed our platform this year to a page and a half, because we're trying to really focus on what we need to make it through the next calendar year. So we put in a special statement in our legislative platform for this round that talks about why BVSD needs more than anything just to keep our funding the same throughout the next year. And we would deeply, deeply appreciate it if there are no grants or special programs or anything like that that is sort of fettered or restricted. We don't really know exactly what our needs are going to be day to day, because things are changing so fast. So it would be extremely helpful if the money is unrestricted. And in this year, we can use both one-time and recurring. We do prefer recurring funds, because one-time, we of course need to expand by the end of the year. And then we cannot make commitments to employees whose services we probably will need for years to come. So again, grant funding is tricky for us, because we can't really make commitments to people. We are in the people business. Most of what we do is we hire people to help our kids. We hire counselors and interventionists and teachers and food services and par educators and school bus drivers. They cannot be employed through grants in general. So that is what is not really that helpful to us. And so this year in particular, we are asking for no new programs, no new accountability systems, no grant funding, just straight up unrestricted funds. So I'm going to stop there and ask if any board members want to add anything to that. Rob or Kathy in particular, I'm not sure if you-
Well, I have something to add.
Yeah, Richard, perfect.
And then you also have board members that are also community activists out in the community. And sometimes a bill may come through that a community member or a board member may want to support. And then we go to our school board, and we ask the school board to support a particular bill that may or may not have anything to do with education. But that's another aspect in terms of how some other board members work too. So just that I can say that.
Yeah, absolutely. And sometimes you'll find that, I've done this in the past, I will write a legislator and say, I am connecting with you as an individual, because I don't have the board's support perhaps yet or ever on an issue that I'm passionate about. And you'll note that in my email, and I'll make it very clear. I'm not speaking as the school board in this case. I'm speaking as an individual. So that will be, and that's how we operate. The school boards are unique. We speak in one voice when we're speaking as a board, but we all can be activists as individuals, and we will reflect that in our correspondence. Any other comments?
So Tina, since you mentioned CASB, it's a kind of a similar process. We have something called Delegate Assembly, where we vote on resolutions. And we don't usually take a position as CASB until there's an actual bill. So we tried to make it a little more streamlined this year. I wouldn't say we were very successful. But those resolutions are online and available to people. But CASB has kind of a little different process, I thought I just mentioned.
Yeah, but it was less than half of last year.
Which is awesome. I think we're all learning how to focus. We, school boards have been pretty good at coming up with laundry lists, because we're very inclusive. We're trying to pare things down and focus, because we're very clear what our needs are right now. And Rob, do you want to give any, yeah, perfect.
Sure, yes. No, I would say that this session is going to be certainly different. This year has been different than any of the other 24 years that I've spent in public education, with the challenges that we're continuing to try to understand and then solve. I would share with those on the call that we're here to help and support. And so if there's something that's coming down and you need clarification, you'd want to know kind of, you know, some of the expertise from some of the practitioners that are in Boulder Valley Schools, we're happy to connect with you. Just connect with Ernestine or Tanya. And we'd be happy to give you some context and just give you just kind of an on-the-ground, real honest conversation on where things are. I do agree with the legislative platform draft that we have today, that we just have to keep it simple. Funding is going to be an incredible challenge for us, and funding without strings attached. And I think even with the best of intentions, grant programs inevitably begin to start a good idea, but then stop it in its tracks, because there's no way to continue to fund that. I would say the repeal of Gallagher has been a huge win for our state. That's going to help us with funding. You know, Tabor is unique. For those who don't know, I haven't always been in Colorado. I actually moved here from Atlanta and spent a lot of time in Florida as well. So learning Colorado finance has been interesting. Tabor is definitely unique. And with Tabor, we're always going to be making sure that we, you know, just funding is always going to be a challenge. And so we just have to be smart and fiscally responsible with the dollars that we have. But even really good ideas that are grant-funded won't sustain. And I think that that's really important for us to know and understand. And Tina, to the extent that I can share with the group some of our strategic plan goals or anything else, I'm happy to do that. Tanya and Ernestine, if folks want to connect and just hear more about the kind of the workings of what we're working on as a district, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, why don't you do that? I think that's a great idea.
I'm going to share, I'm going to just, I'm going to do a very high level. I'm going to present, if that's okay. Just the three big goals of what we're trying to do with our strategic plan. So when I arrived, two and a half years ago, we started this process and partnered with the board to help lead our district through a revised strategic planning process. And really, we have three pretty high-level goals. Thumbs up if you could see what I'm presenting. We really want to do three things, and I've developed a five-year strategy to try to execute on those. First is we want to make sure that all kids get challenging and relevant educational opportunities. We want to make sure the kids aren't bored in school, that they're excited about what they're learning, and that they're challenged. And all kids are challenged. So we have a high bar for all of our students. You know, we've always had, you know, Boulder Valley is one of the highest-performing school districts in the state. I think everybody knows that. But we've had these disparities in achievement and achievement gaps that have plagued our district and community for a long time. And we are fully committed to making sure that we do whatever we need to do to close those opportunity and achievement gaps, to make sure that all kids get great opportunities and experiences in our school district. And then finally, we know that we need to give kids, when they leave Boulder Valley Schools, that they need to have a set of skills in addition to, you know, the credits that they've earned and the courses that they've gone through, that are going to make them to be successful in the world that they're going to be entering in. We also know that we have to have multiple pathways, that a lot of our kids are college-bound. But we shouldn't limit our kids to just being college-bound, that we need to be, expanding our career technical programs and make sure that regardless of what a kid wants to be when they grow up and what they want to pursue, that we have avenues to prepare them. So at a very high level, that's what our strategic plan is designed to do. This pandemic has slowed us down a little bit. We've made really great progress in the past two years in regards to meeting these goals. Additionally, as kind of a through line through all of our big goals, we've embraced excellence through equity. And I can share a link with you all. I'll share it in the chat that highlights all of the equity work that we're doing. I'm really proud of the work that our district, our board, our community has embraced around ensuring that we're equitable and really working on reducing the disparities in achievement and opportunity. And so that's the elevator pitch, I would say, on what it is that at a high level we're working on, fully committed. We've got a really strong plan. And again, happy to follow up with anybody if you want more details, have questions on those things. I know our time is limited this morning, but wanted to get an opportunity to share that with you. So thank you, Tina.
Yeah, so let's stop there. And what questions might our legislators have? Anything?
Rob, real quickly, can you, can you just talk a little bit about what you're up against in terms of like mental health needs, in terms of morale in the district? I know the board has been actively engaged, as have you, with our students, parents, what you're hearing from parents. I think it's important, as the members are coming into the session, to sort of understand that piece and why the funding with sort of strings attached is so important, because of what you're having to jump to day to day.
Thanks, Tanya. I will tell you, it has taken everything that all of our team has to just try to keep us together through this pandemic. I would say that the mental, social, emotional, and mental health needs of our kids and of our employees are greater maybe than they've ever been. You know, isolation isn't good for anyone. We've pushed really hard as a board and as a district to do everything we can to get kids in person as much as possible, to do a few things. Obviously, we think in-person learning is better, but also to begin to understand what our kids are going through. It's hard to be able to do that on a Zoom call or a Google Meet. So as you're thinking about mental health resources and supports, some of the things that we're doing, we're trying to provide some of those supports and resources for our kids and for our families. But we're certainly, our budget wasn't built on managing the mental health needs of our kids, our staff, and our community through a pandemic. We didn't build our budget that way. So more funding for that certainly would be appropriate in just following up with kids. And I think that the worry that superintendents have is even when we get out of this pandemic, there's going to be lasting impact on what happened as kids have gone through this and as people and as our employees have gone through this. And so I think that you will hear this come up in session, Tanya. I think that you're right about that, that the mental health needs and mental health supports. And so to the extent that the legislature could support school districts in that, that would be helpful.
This is Barb Kirkmire. So what portion of your budget is grant-related or grant-funded right now?
Pretty small percentage. I don't, I couldn't give you the exact percentage. I think that there are recurring grants that we kind of count on. I know that we've had some recurring grants that have certainly helped us with our health services team, providing nurses and things of that nature. I can follow up with you though, Senator, like if that would be something that you'd be interested in. I can have our CFO run that for us.
That would be great, because I'd also, and then I'd also like to have an understanding of when you say that mental health programs and you'd like to see additional funding. Could you be a bit more specific as to what you're talking about? And while you answer that, could you also tell me what portion of your, are you doing in-person, any in-person right now, or is everything remote in your district?
So we are working on trying to figure out ways to do in-person with some of our intensive needs students over the next few weeks. We made the decision, along with most of the metro districts, to go fully remote because of the case numbers and just because of the quarantining guidelines, which have been shifted, which is a step in the right direction. I still think case numbers are incredibly high. And so at this point, trying to work with our most intensive students on bringing them back in person. In regards to funding for programs, you know, mental health advocates, social workers, you know, it's not a program I think that we're trying to buy as opposed to people's time to really give that small group or one-on-one support and counseling for kids and for employees that are going through really tough times. I think that there's really no substitute to that interaction and that level of expertise. And if folks are going through those things, it's, we just need to be able to have the bandwidth and expertise on our team to be able to meet the needs of people where they are, kids and adults included. And we've been dealing probably more with adults than I think that I've ever seen in public education, because of this pandemic has just been really difficult on the adults as well as the kids. So to be specific, it would be getting the expertise and bandwidth on our team to be able to meet the needs of our people.
Yeah, and can I also throw in, I think we'll also be looking to invest more in summer learning gaps as well. We do know that there are going to be bigger achievement gaps resulting from the pandemic. There already are. And there's going to be an expectation that we address those gaps really quickly. But again, our budget didn't include, you know, that much one-on-one or small group tutoring and interventions that are probably going to need to occur over the summer. And, you know, on top of that, we're going to be looking to our same teachers probably, who just went through this pandemic, to step in and help, because there's not sort of this reserve of people who are teachers who are available. And Rob, correct me if I'm wrong. So it's going to be an interesting challenge for us to sort of continue to energize our teachers to step in and do work that's harder than it's ever been. And I want to make that really clear, that this hybrid learning and remote learning is extraordinarily difficult, and it's less satisfying for teachers. Teachers inherently want to be with kids. And there seems to be this bizarre narrative in the community that this is sort of a, like people are coasting through this. And we hear this in a couple emails. It's certainly not a widespread thing, but I just want to address it upfront, that this is incredibly challenging for teachers. And they're going to be exhausted in May. And then we are going to have this issue with these bigger gaps than we've ever seen before that we need to fix as fast as we can. And Rob, is there anything I got wrong there?
No, I think that you've hit the nail on the head. And I would say that it's going to take us longer than a summer to catch kids up, right? Like, so, I mean, I think as we think about funding in future years as well, the idea of remediation, you know, catch-up acceleration, you know, in a typical classroom or school district, typically talking about a few kids, you're going to be talking about a lot of kids. And for the years to come, I think that we're going to be working through, how do we begin to be smarter with our time, maximizing every minute in the day? And how do we use these breaks, you know, whether it's summer, whether it's before, after-school weekends? We're going to have to really think outside of the box to try to figure out ways to try to leverage our talent of our teachers and the time of our kids to catch them up. And to Tina's point, and one of my biggest worries is if the vaccine and, you know, what we're hearing will start to hit January, February, and by May, maybe we have some more of a return to normalcy, who's going to want to stay in school? Okay, kids, you know, if everything gets more back to normal. So I just think that there are massive challenges for public education that I think some people understand a little bit about, and a few peoples understand deeply. And it's not the problems just facing us today, but are facing us tomorrow as well. And to Tina's point, I've never seen educators work as hard as they're working now. And to the extent that we can continue to support our educators as they're dealing with this and not trying to, you know, because they're scared for their safety as well, as many of our families are. And then, and we know that a lot of folks are really want to get into in-person learning. It's just this really, this tension, I think, between our most valuable resource, which is our people, and this situation has created, you know, a lot of stress for people. And they are burnt out. And we're just trying to keep them going and staying as positive as we can.
Any other questions from our legislators?
Tina, Karen looked like she raised her hand early, and Judy's got her hand up.
Yeah. Judy?
Yeah, I, well, okay.
Sorry, Karen, go.
That's okay. I was curious to know a little bit more about the achievement gaps that you recognized when you came into the school district, and a little specific on what those are and which communities you're seeing those in, as well as what new achievement gaps have shown up over the past eight months or the ones that were present have been exacerbated by this situation? Just to have a little clearer picture on who we need to focus on in closing those gaps. But then, again, new gaps are going to be showing up, like you all have just said, that we are going to have to address in the years to come. So if you could point out maybe a little more specifically who those people are, those kids?
That's a great question. So, you know, as we reviewed the data, and again, this is a trend and pattern that's, if you go back, you know, at least within the last decade, still holds true. You could pull up any measure of academic achievement in Boulder Valley Schools and see significant gaps amongst, you know, the gaps amongst some of the largest in the state of Colorado, which has some of the largest gaps in the country. Like, to put all that into context, whether it's graduation rate, whether it's access to advanced coursework, whether it's performance on standardized tests, PSAT, SAT, ACT, CMAS, all of those measures that folks would typically look to, we have gaps. And we have significant gaps between our white students and our Latino and African-American students. And we also have gaps between our students who are growing up in poverty, not growing up in poverty, our students who are served in our special education program and our students who aren't. And so on the link that I've included in the chat, links to our strategic plan, Excellence Through Equity, you can learn a little bit more about that, give you some more depth. I would say the challenge that we have today in understanding how those gaps are growing is that we are finding it incredibly difficult to get accurate data, because we're assessing kids online while they're at home. So, you know, one of the things that we've seen is kids have done phenomenally well on their pre-tests, better than they've ever done before in Boulder Valley Schools. on, on their pre-tests, better than they've ever done before in Boulder Valley schools. And I will share an anecdote of a teacher who was trying to assess a student on reading and literally on camera saw the girl, the little girl's parent under the table giving her the answers. I mean, these are challenges we've never faced before. I wish that was, I was making that up. I'm not. So it's hard to stay, like, I can't sit here with a straight face and tell you, oh, we're fine because we gave this test and the results came back and kids are doing incredibly well. I don't think that's the case. I do think that it's going to, we have to have kids in person with us, full-time, assess them in front of us in a normal setting to really understand where kids are and what they're missing and not missing. I will say that one thing that has helped us as we've moved into this, and this is for the first time in Boulder Valley School District history, we've actually aligned the standards between schools and grades on what we're teaching. We had teachers come together over the past year to really tell us what are the most important standards that kids need to learn. And so we're focusing, I think we have a better overall focus in continuity between schools and between teachers on what it is that we're teaching, which I think is a critical first step in understanding, you know, what kids are getting, especially as time is a limiting factor for us today. And so I think that's a step in the right direction. Again, you can learn more about our work on that. We've got 13 real big initiatives. So it's hard to say where we are today, except to, I'm confident we're behind. And I'm confident that, that, that parents and families who have the means and resources are less behind than those that don't. And to the extent, to the extent of that, we're just going to have to wait until we're able to get back into a regular rhythm to begin to assess and begin to develop those plans of remediation and support for those students.
Okay, Judy?
Okay, so this might be a little bit too in the weeds, but I have been hearing this from, you know, some parent circles that last year's seniors and this year's seniors are, the, the at-risk kids are particularly for going college. And I wonder if you have any information about last year's kids? If they applied as much, last year's seniors? If they got into colleges at the same rates? If they actually decided to attend in the fall? And then if there's a plan in place to make sure that we don't lose, you know, two years of kids that otherwise might have gone on to higher education that aren't going to go because they didn't have the supports that they needed with counselors and, you know, other kids talking about their plans and the whole social thing that happens and the professional thing that happens to help kids that are struggling to go, go?
Those are great questions. I would say the one piece of data that I, that I do have is, is FAFSA completion rates, which actually were up last year. And so I think that that's, that's one piece in regards to applying. Now, to the extent that, that less kids decided to go to college, with college being a different experience this year than it had been in previous years, I don't have the data at this point to see whether or not kids decided to go off to college, especially for some of those colleges that may have been working remotely. You know, I did, you know, just anecdotally, kids taking gap years, kind of trying to figure some of those things out. I don't have the data. That's, that's a, it's something we could certainly look to see what data points we might be able to gather. But again, the one piece of data that I do know that we have is FAFSA completion rates, which were up last year. And, but I'd have to look into some of those other pieces. And I think Stacy has some insight here because I know she has a senior, so.
Yeah, hi. I do have a senior, but I also professionally do some higher ed research and policy analysis. So I have a little bit of insight, although I don't have data on it. So this year, applications at CU were up by a lot. The free application day was a huge success, apparently. I do know that last year, I don't think applications were down because most of the applications and acceptance since had already happened by the time remote learning began. But I do know that a portion decided to take a gap year or defer because they didn't want to go to college remotely or whatever the case may be. Anecdotally, I'll tell you that I do think there will be a lot of gap year kids this year, my kid included. He's not going to go to college for a variety of reasons, but pandemic kind of put the, you know, the nail on the head with that decision. So we'll just have to see how it pans out. Higher education is reeling. They're having a really difficult time as well in the state and across the country. So I think this time will tell what happens. Since applications were up in Colorado, we'll just have to wait and see how many actually attend and then, and then go from there. But I think college-going will change for the foreseeable future. And I, I also think the ACT and SAT right now are optional, but I suspect that they will go away as part of a admission standard based on what's happened with the pandemic. So I think there's a lot of changes ahead for higher ed.
Thank you.
Tina, just let me add to that. I'm also on the community college board. And what we're finding is that the applications for our community college system has gone down. And in some cases, some of the community colleges enrollment has gone up, but in general it's gone down. So, and most of our kids of color, a lot of our kids of color are going to community colleges.
Okay. Other questions?
Tina, can I pivot a little bit here and have Rob sort of address this childcare issue? I know we're going into special session today and there's going to be a bill on childcare funding. Thought it'd be important to talk about some of the needs in the district there.
And then, Tina, after that, I have a couple finance questions.
Fabulous.
Thank you, Ernestine. Yes, no. We, we've really, even, even as we have gone in and out of in-person learning, we've really tried to be there for our community and provide childcare. We've provided that at a reduced rate within, within our district, within our school-age care program. Not all school districts have, have the infrastructure to provide childcare. Some of those, they work with community partners, depending upon the district. We actually have been offering that ourselves and have taken pretty significant losses. I mean, close to a million dollars. I would say that, you know, typically at a childcare program, you want to at least cover your costs. But if we were to do that, we felt like the price was going to be too high. And then we've just worked with any families who have said, look, we can't afford it. And we've said, okay, that's fine. We're going to be there for you so you can, so we can watch your kids so you can go to work. So as, as you go into special session, certainly know that childcare funding that districts would be able to access would certainly help us and support us.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, though, that childcare is really second best for us. We just would rather have our schools open and it's, it is a little bit awkward when we offer childcare to all of our kids, but we won't offer in-person school. But we have lots of kids in classrooms with adults and it feels like school, but it's not school and we all know it. So it's, that has been an interesting path to navigate for us as board members when we're speaking out with our community. Why can you watch lots of kids in your schools, but you can't teach lots of, lots of kids in your schools? So our goal really is to be back in in-person learning, especially for our little kids, though, meaning kids who are five. Any questions about the childcare?
Something to add. I'm also involved in a community group in terms of childcare, Ernestine. And one of the things that we're finding is that our, our individual childcare providers are really hurting a lot. And I know that part of the special session is going to be talking on how to support not just so much the school childcare system, but the community childcare system. And they are hurting a lot. And I think that's something that, that this Long Mountain Group that I belong to has been working on for, for a year and a half already in terms of how do you improve childcare and how do you close the gaps in terms of some of the families that can't afford the childcare that, that is needed in, in our community because it's so expensive for families to put their kids in childcare.
Kathy, on to finance questions?
Yeah, just a couple things. One, I think we put it in our platform, but I can't remember. But what we're hoping is that we get flat funding from last year, I think you said, Tina, because I think we're down something like 1,700 students. And so what we're hoping is that we can still get the same funding based on the number of pupils that we had last year and that money stays in education, that they don't, legislature doesn't see that as a bonus to reallocate money because students aren't showing up. It's a problem across all districts pretty much. So we're just hoping that that money can stay in education. And then, this is a little in the weeds, but you guys are going to have to be looking at it. Next, last session, they added something called mill levy equalization. And so you will be able to potentially raise local property taxes. And what I'm asking is that if you do that, that money stays in education. There wasn't anything in the bill that I remember that kept that money in education. So if you're raising local mill levies, we're asking that that money stays in education because as you've heard, there's a lot of need out there and not enough money. And so in places where there is already allocated financial structures for K-12, we're just asking that that money stays within K-12 and isn't seen as some source of money to go elsewhere. And then lastly, what I would say is there was a, last session, the legislature punted to a committee to figure out what to do about assessments. You've heard a little bit about that. That committee was not able to reach consensus. So I think that our board hasn't taken a position, but DASC has taken a position, if I'm not wrong, Rob, on, on what we should be doing about assessments. And so that also ties into the whole conversation around learning loss and how do we measure it and all of that. So those are, those are three of my points. The other thing I would say is we're lucky in Boulder. We've had pretty stable personnel at our administrative level and we have a great team. We happen to have a CFO who's been around forever who understands his stuff to a level that I don't think anybody besides him understands it to. So I'm going to offer him up, Rob, if people have questions because he really, really, you look around the front range and he's been around a lot longer than almost any other CO or CFO. And as you get into these mill levy questions and these finance questions, I think that we're a good place to turn to for advice and kind of hard numbers as to what those impacts mean. That's all right, Rob.
Yeah, even just if you are confused. I get confused a lot and I've been doing this a long time. Now, granted, I'm not a budget person, but some of this mill levy stuff that relates to property values, not to overrides, is pretty complicated and we certainly refresh our board frequently because those conversations keep evolving. And I do want to just piggyback on what Kathy said about enrollment. So most districts have, most metro districts have experienced a lot of enrollment decline as parents sought in-person learning or chose homeschooling instead of the all-day, all-screen, all-the-time option, which is fully understandable. We don't really know who's coming back in the fall. And with the vaccine, things are looking really promising. I am an eternal optimist and I think we're going to be back fully in-person, full-time in August. That's just where I, my head is right now. We don't know what that really means for our families. So we don't know how many of the 1,000 students in our online program are going to come back to the school. We have no idea. But we don't want to let those teachers go until we know who we need to serve. And ideally, we would retain that staff to help with all these gaps that we're talking about. So it's really tricky. We know it's a big ask, but it would be really helpful to us. So that is the other thing. The other thing is, and this is one of the things you'll hear me talk about as an individual, but there's also the Charter School Institute Mill Levy Equalization, which is different than the Mill Levy Equalization that Kathy talks about. The Charter School, the CSI Mill Levy is a chunk of the budget that the, that has been decided that only charter schools get, but is not extended to school districts who have been unable to pass a mill levy override. So that's just, you know, Boulder, of course, has a mill levy override, so that doesn't make sense. But for some reason, it was decided that just charter schools would get that, not other districts who were unable to get overrides. So, and that's a little, we have three different mill levy conversations that happen. One with charter schools, one that has to do with property taxes, and one that has, has to do with local mill levy override. So it does get a little tricky. And, and we would like to retain the opportunity to raise more local mill levy overrides. That's also in our legislative platform because Boulder has the capacity to do that, Boulder Valley School District. And we would also prefer that our local mill levy overrides stay local. From time to time, legislators feel that the locally raised, locally voted upon mill levies should in fact be distributed to other districts. And, and we feel that those should stay local because those were asked for by our voters who decided they, they did want to invest more in, in public education. But that doesn't mean that we don't support overall ways of taxation that will help all of districts, if that's a good summary Kathy said about where we're at.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated, as you said, but they do carve out charter schools and give them preferential treatment when it comes to mill levy overrides without any clear discussion as to what the policies are behind that. And, and Tina's comment about mill levy overrides being locally voted and locally supported also holds true to what I was saying about property taxes. And if you raise our local mills, even for total program, those are our local dollars that should stay local. They shouldn't go, especially outside of education, to support anything else. And then, since Tina raised charters, I'm going to just say one more thing, which is Colorado is the worst-funded state in the entire country for special education. And as we all know, special education has been especially hard-hit in this pandemic. We're facing class action over how we've handled special education this time around and those children are going to need especially a lot of supports, I think. And so I just put that out there because two years ago, Senator Zenzinger actually started talking about special education funding. It was the first time in my career of doing anything in education that I saw that. So I just put that out there because we really, really, really underfund that and they are some of our neatest students. And so it relies on, just so you guys know, us locally to pick up everything, which we're happy to do. We want to serve our children. But if there was a little bit of support for special education, that would help every district as we move forward out of this.
Okay, Kathy, you brought it up. You know, I'm, I can't help it. Just another thing, and we, we have great relationships with our charter schools here in Boulder Valley School District, but the National Center on Special Education for Charter Schools did a study two years ago and it showed that Colorado was ranked worst in the nation for charter schools serving special education, where as a group, Colorado charter schools serve half as many sped kids as do the locally, as local public schools and neighborhood schools. So sometimes we talk about, there's just a lot of great work with some of our charter schools, a lot of innovation, but one area of opportunity that CSI is aware of is that they're really not serving the sped kids. And that does actually have a financial impact on our district because they are a lot more expensive. And the presumption is, but the data hasn't been presented, that a lot fewer of the very high-needs kids are being served in our charter management schools. So again, it's just another, with this pandemic, some of these issues are really popping out because it's, we've been really challenged with our special education kits. And it's really sad because the gap in achievement with sped is huge. And we know we have a lot of work to do and it's only become so much harder. So, and, and parents are rightfully upset. It's just impossible. It's an impossible situation, so.
Tina, I think Representative-elect Burnett had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was droning.
No worries.
Oh, no, that's, that's okay. Thank you. This has been very informative. I have a, I have children with learning disabilities, so my heart goes, they're, they're mild ones, but my heart goes out to that challenge you have with special education. So I just had to say that. I actually had three quick questions. One of them is, I've been involved with affordable housing for quite a while, you know, and advocated for teach, affordable housing for teachers in the Boulder Valley School District about five years ago. And I just was wondering is, how is teacher pay and affordability for especially first, first-year, second-year teachers going, you know, how is it looking right now? Because Boulder is a very expensive place to live. The other two questions I have in charter schools, are there any, I mean, my kids have gone to charter schools as well. And I just wonder what kind of challenges you see with accountability, reporting with charter schools? Are there any ideas for improving that? Because I know you, you really have a challenge there. The third question is regarding, Richard Garcia had mentioned childcare. And I was wondering is that the ideas, he's been working with someone named Longmont, is that with Bob Norris by any chance? Because I've seen some legislative ideas from Bob Norris. So those are my questions.
Well, the last, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm familiar with that. Thank you.
Richard, why don't you start?
I just answered the question, yeah.
He just answered it, yeah.
Okay, Rob, do you want to go with affordability and teacher pay?
Absolutely. So I would say that our average salary is, is the highest, at least it was in 2018. We haven't done an analysis or I don't have anything earlier than that, highest pay in all the state. So I think that, and with that, it's, teachers still can't afford to live here. And a majority of our teachers do not live in the school district. Now, a lot of them live in Boulder County, right? They live in Longmont. And a lot of our teachers, their kids go to St. Rain, Adams 12, Jeffco. Those are the three big areas. And so we do very well with pay, but it's just still not as affordable as it could be. And, you know, that causes all kinds of issues for us that are, I think, invisible to most folks. So for example, during the pandemic, if Adams 12 or Jeffco or St. Rain make a decision, for our teachers, it puts them in a really tough position, right? So if Adams 12 decides to go remote, and then there's childcare issues and other things like that. So I think that we'll continue to focus on compensation for our people. I think that that's incredibly important. It's, you know, and because we pay well, we have very low, we have very high retention and very low turnover in comparison to other districts around us and other districts that I've worked in. And so I would say that, to the extent that we don't, I don't think we're actively working on any affordable housing projects at this point in time. But certainly a challenge.
Okay, and then about charter school accountability?
Hey, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Barb Kirkmire again. I have to get off the phone. I have to walk into a board meeting. But I just want to thank you for the call and thank you for all of the information. And look forward to any information you're going to email to us. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator Left.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, just with our charter schools, we, I don't think we have any big issues with our charter schools, but we have just been working on creating a more predictable process with our charter schools in terms of contract renewals and negotiations. Is that, Rob, is that more or less accurate?
Yeah, I would say that we're working on a couple of things. Number one, making sure that we do that. And then number two, making sure that we're supporting them to ensure that there's an appropriate level of diversity in the schools and that they're serving more students in special education. And so I think that those are ongoing challenges. And, you know, to the extent to what Tina had shared earlier, there's really no accountability in that regard for charters. Like they're not, there's no more state requirements, local requirements on who it is that they have to serve. And I would say that, you know, for the challenges for charter schools, you know, without providing transportation and depending upon where their location is, that a lot of our charter schools aren't reflective of the district population as a whole in regards to, you know, demographics and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Tina, can we pivot a little bit and maybe put Senator Story on the spot to talk about maybe some insights into the special session and what that means for some of the education funding bills?
Great idea.
Senator, you can also talk about the upcoming House and Senate Education Committee assignments, if you have any of that insight.
Yeah, thanks. I can stay on just 15 more minutes. I don't intend to talk that long, but I appreciate the opportunity. And you all have shared a wealth of information, and much of it is not surprising at all. It's information that I've heard from others as well regarding funding and the need for, you know, no grants, no new special programs, no new special projects. We just need the opportunity to, you know, get back to teaching and focus on instruction for kids. And hopefully, in-person is sooner than later. You know, many of the other topics that you have brought up to, you know, concerning assessments and mental health and, you know, all of those topics are top of mind. And I think many of us are cognizant of that. And I appreciate you reinforcing it coming out of your district. And I look forward to further, you know, conversations with you all about that. Relative to committee assignments, we thought that we were going to have committee assignments last week. And, hang on, I just lost my video of you. Okay, I thought we were going to have committee assignment announcements last week. I have certainly made my case for being Senate Education Chair, and I'm hoping that that is going to come through. I, you know, it's hard to know. There's like, I haven't heard any indication about how that will play out. But I certainly have made the case that I believe I'm the best qualified for that role and am very interested in having that place. So we're hopeful, but then we were told, once the special session was a real thing, that that decision or those announcements were being put off until after special session, at least in the Senate. And I think that I heard the House was further back in their decision-making than us or in terms of making announcements. So I, you know, the House members could, you know, perhaps address that as well. So eagerly awaiting those decisions. And relative to, you know, legislation that we are, you know, looking at, you have certainly mentioned several bills that are, you know, going to happen here during special session. There is one that is focused on childcare and an effort not only to sustain the childcare centers that are currently out there that are licensed, but provide some funding to sustain them because they have had lower enrollment, not unlike K-12. And they have capacity restraints that keep them from having more kids. And yet they have many of the same expenditures that are required to keep them rolling, but have less revenue coming in. So our attempt overall through this special session is to provide a bridge that we hope will lead to additional federal funding. We know that no matter what we do in the coming days, that it will be enough. But we're hoping that it will help sustain some. Not only programs like childcare, but certainly individuals that are hurting and other small businesses. There's a bill on housing to, you know, invest more in housing so people don't lose their homes. There's a bill focused on food pantries and that, expanding that grant program and infusing more funding there with some additional changes because we know that is a huge, huge issue. And the numbers of people needing food assistance have just been growing exponentially. And again, it won't be near enough, but we hope it will be helpful to many and keep some from going over the edge. There is a bill focused on broadband connectivity for students and educators that is also being set up in such a way that larger school districts would have an opportunity to seek some of that funding, where I think the previous bill, it was set up in such a way that it would be helpful maybe for smaller districts. So there's potential there that if you still are, you know, have students that don't have hardware or there are spots where students certainly don't have access, that hopefully some creative ideas can be found to help make that happen. And certainly, small businesses, there's an effort underway this session to address small businesses that also have been hurt by capacity. So restaurants and venues and athletic clubs and others where they have had to reduce the capacity that they typically would carry. So it has prohibited them from either being open at all. Restaurants, you know, as you know, that are right now closed to indoor dining, and that's horrible. And there are many small businesses that are likely to close without this infusion. And we hope it's enough to allow them to hang on to what we hope will be federal relief. But there does not seem to be any sense that that's going to happen before the end of the year from the feds. So I think, again, we, as legislators, we find ourselves in this really terrible, painful space where we know what we're doing is not enough, but we're hoping that it will make a difference and help some. And, you know, it's tough. But looking ahead, beyond the special session, there is a lot, a lot of work going on to, you know, work towards regular session. And we are setting ourselves up to be able to be remote, like most everyone, be remote on a regular basis for not only floor work, but also committee work. And during the special session, committee will be in-person for the legislators. But we're hoping all testimony, by and large, will be remote. And then when we get to January, we're hoping that, you know, everything will be remote and we'll have a good experience with most legislators being remote during the special session. And, but in terms of things that I'm aware of and that I'm working on, I am working on an alternative principal licensure bill that mirrors not only what the alternative teacher licensure bill is, but, and the principal licensure program has been in place, but it hasn't been in statute. So this is just codifying a process that's already been there. So I'm working on that. I don't expect any grand opposition to that. I am continuing to work on the educator effectiveness bill that I have been working on the last two sessions. My purpose, I don't want to talk about it too long, and I could spend a really long time talking about it. And I'm happy to have additional conversations with you all and would look forward to having your additional input. But as you know, what's in statute currently, the big thing is that, you know, 50% of every educator's evaluation is based on student growth scores. Okay, so last year, you know, testing was, states were allowed to submit for a waiver by Grant Secretary of Education DeVos, which was perhaps the most miraculous thing that she did as the Secretary of Education. And all 50 states did submit that waiver. So the testing, as you know, didn't happen. And so then that testing also, or evaluations were somewhat paused, I guess, for last year. And I'm not sure how districts handled them. It seems like it was kind of individual, you know, however you wished to handle them for last year because certainly they were underway before the pandemic hit. And then this year, Commissioner Anthes, you know, made a statement that it would all be based on professional practice, is my understanding, and that assessments would not be utilized because the assessments weren't given last spring. And so you don't have those results to fall back on for those growth scores. So that's, that's fine. And of course, we're in this very strange place where, you know, instructional delivery is so chaotic and so unstable, I guess, that it, it just seems like it would be so incredibly challenging to have a really effective educator evaluation when, like, everything that you would normally base it on would be really difficult because you're not in-person, you're not in the buildings, or you are in-person or you're hybrid, and it just is all over the place. And I think the whole idea is that we just need to support our teachers as best we can to provide them with as many resources as we can that they need and just work really hard to get through this really, really hard, challenging time. And I think many of us all understand that. It's a matter of, also, Commissioner Anthes does not have the authority to make the decision that she made because evaluations are in statute. And so she doesn't have the ability to change statute because she just decided that's better. So there is an attempt to codify that, to make sure that there aren't any strange challenges relative to educators' evaluations for this year. But going forward on my bill, previously, the bill was structured, but then was never introduced because of the, you know, pandemic and how we shut down our session and had to focus on other priorities regarding health and economic issues. I set it aside, but the bill was structured at that time to drop the percentage to 30% of an evaluation would be based on educators' growth scores for this current school year that we are in. And then going forward in '21, '22, and going forward beyond that, that the growth scores would become a part of a greater body of evidence to discuss and utilize for the purpose of forming, formulating, you know, improved instructional practice, just like you would with anything else. And, and so certainly it would be part of the discussion, but we wouldn't utilize it any longer as a basis for determining an educator's effectiveness. So my, also my feeling regarding assessments, and I think it was, you know, the challenges of assessments right now, like there's, like there's nobody on this call, I'm sure, that thinks there hasn't been student learning loss during this timeframe. And I personally feel that to just sit down and do assessments, even if we did them this spring, would be nonsensical. Like, the tests were created with a certain type of instruction in mind, and we have not had that instruction so far this year. That has been stable delivery of instruction nor the end of last year. And to think that we can sit down and run an assessment and feel like it's valid or that the testing is reliable when we've never had these circumstances for testing before, or that we can give assessments online to students while they're at home and just think we're going to do our statewide testing, I just think that's absolutely ludicrous. So I am hoping that the feds, again, will provide a waiver as soon as possible, as soon as we have the new administration in place, so that states are not required to run those. Again, my personal opinion is that we should not have to do statewide testing that we are paying millions and millions of dollars for until we have had a full year of stable instructional delivery. So let's say everything falls together just perfectly, and we do get back to normalcy next fall, and we have a solid, you know, fall and into the winter opportunity for good instruction, and we're not bouncing back and forth between in-person and online and hybrid and all kinds of different configurations, that it just runs like clockwork again. But we are working with, you know, mental health transitions and other transitions of just getting kids back. I don't think we should do testing in that spring either because you've only had, you know, seven months or six months, I don't know, count them however you wish, of solid, stable instruction. Like, let's have the whole year, and then let's look at testing the next year. But that's not a decision we can make at the state level. But that's my personal opinion about that. So anyway, I am working on that bill for educator effectiveness so that we can focus on professional development and growth for educators and providing them what they need and helping them grow in their profession without holding a stick over them with testing, student testing, because it is not valid or reliable to use that to measure an educator's effectiveness. It was, the tests were written to measure student learning, acquisition of standards or skills, and that's what it's supposed to be valid and reliable for. And so it can never be valid or reliable for use of evaluating educators because that's not why, how the test was created. So anyway, there's that. And I know there are a number of other, you know, conversations going on relative to education bills and the, oh, the funding piece that you mentioned. I will just say, relative to maintaining the funding that was allocated in the last bill, and now we have these student count levels that are low, there has been a lot of conversation about that because I am with you. We can't afford to lose funding in public education at all given that it is more expensive right now and costing more to run schools when we are in this uncertain time. There is strong indication that, that this can be managed without running a bill and do it through supplemental so that it just, the funding remains where we expected it to be before we headed into COVID. So just know there are a whole bunch of us that are hot on that track and that JBC has given a nod, you know, at least in the Senate, about dealing with this through a supplemental in January.
Kathy, that's super helpful. That's really, really important. That's like, so for the freshman-elect members, this is really important because these are going to be the first budget bills that you vote on. The way the school districts are funded is by PPOR, which each student that's in the count gets funded. But if they're letting us keep that extra revenue because the students have But if they're letting us keep that extra revenue because the students haven't been able to show up, as Tina and Kathy mentioned, Senator Story is, that's huge. So for the House members, and there's a lot of you that just got elected, we'll need you to encourage your joint budget committee members, Rep. Harrod and Rep. McCleskey, to do the same thing, as the Senate committee members. So that's really important intel that Senator Story just gave us. Thank you.
And just know, we know that's not enough. Like, it's going to help, and it's going to relieve some stress, I think, but it's not enough. It's not enough. So, anyway, but thank you. Thanks for, thanks for the time to chat with you. I'm really grateful. And I look forward to conversations, and I hope you will reach out when you have needs or thoughts or whatever, and so.
Thank you, Senator Story, and good luck during the special session.
Thank you.
Kitty? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Every time I tried to scroll over it, it disappeared. So just a couple of things I would like to suggest is, could you all find any other place to balance the budget other than on the backs of our students? You know, it's been going on forever. It seems that the negative factor comes out of education, and, you know, we see what's happening. It's really, really hurting the school districts. So, I mean, I don't have any ideas of where else you could do that, but I would really hope you could find someplace else. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, and it's in our platform, is the repeal of Claire Davis. That was a kind of a knee-jerk law that holds the districts accountable without providing any kind of funding to improve school safety. So I would love for you all to get rid of that bill, please.
All right. Any other closing comments? We're really coming to the end of our time, and we know how much work all of our legislators are doing on our behalf. Rob?
Well, thank you all again. When we send you our materials, we will also send you just a one cheater from DVSD on constituent services. From time to time, you may have parents or others try to engage you in regards to the work of the school district, and we want to provide you a process that gives you a clean handoff. You can send it directly to me as superintendent. I'll have our staff follow up with those parents and then loop you back in regards to what we did. And so we'll make sure that we send that to you to make that easy for you. So we know that you are, all are, you know, can be inundated with, with things, and when it comes to DVSD, we want to make sure that we're great partners. And then just finally, as Tina shared, let us be your partner. We're happy to help to give you any context, insight, just, you know, try to be incredibly objective in regards to the information we give you as you try to understand the complexities of K-12, and then how it relates to your roles as legislators. So thank you all so much. Appreciate the partnership.
And if you ever need parents to testify for a bill, just let us know. We can probably help coordinate that. And additionally, if none of you have toured a classroom, and if we open again, that is an open invitation. We love having our legislators be at our schools. Governor Polis was out with us for the opening of a school last fall. So that is an open door in your community if you want to come. And I know the kids often do studies around civics and local governments, and would of course be so delighted to see you. So that's always an open offer, not right now, but in the future. So with that, just please reach out to our lobbyist or to Rob, and with questions, and let us know how we can help you. And we thank you for your service, and congratulate you all again.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Very, very informative.
Thank you.
I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Appreciate what you are doing every day. It's a lot for our kids. Really, really grateful.
Yeah.
Take care. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.